The yellow light will turn on and you should conclude your remarks. When your time has ended, the red light will turn on and at that time you must take your seat. In order to maintain a respectful environment, the use of signs, clapping, cheering or booing, or other form of verbal or nonverbal communication is not allowed. Tonight's meeting is airing live on Edina TV, the city's website, and Facebook, and it will also be available online and in rebroadcast after the meeting. Thank you all very much.
Welcome to the September 28, 2022, Meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. The city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We have been collecting public input through voicemail, email, and our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. It's important you know that all comments that have been submitted have been received and read prior to the start of this meeting. You do not need to submit the same feedback in another way. All feedback is considered equally, regardless of the way in which it was submitted. Tonight, there is one public hearing. Individuals who want to provide testimony remotely for this public hearing can do so by calling 888-504-7949 and enter participant passcode 326815. Everyone is allowed up to three minutes to speak. Please give your full name and address, and staff member Liz Olson will let anyone who calls in know if they've gone over three minutes. Remember, you do not need to call in or comment live tonight if you have already provided feedback. And also, please do not repeat information already presented. Provide testimony if you have new comments or information to bring forth. All right, our meeting agenda has been approved. First, we will kick into our community comment. So we will hear from residents in person who would like to speak about something not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. You may speak up to three minutes. After giving your full name and address, the green light on your podium will turn on. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the yellow light will turn on, and when you are out of time, the red light will turn on. So with that, I'd like to invite anyone up to provide community comment if they'd wish to do so. Seeing none, we will go right into our public hearings. So first up tonight is a 10-foot height variance for a freestanding sign at 7777 Washington Avenue South, and Assistant Planner Bodiker will be presenting tonight.
All right. Thank you Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The applicant is requesting a sign variance for the height of a freestanding sign adjacent to Highway 169. The subject property, 7777 Washington Avenue South, is located on the west side of Highway 169, east of Washington Avenue South. The existing building is a three-story, 21,000-square-foot building and is the site of the district Edina. The applicant is asking for one variance, a variance to the height of the proposed freestanding sign on the east side of the property. The proposed sign meets all of their requirements of the city's sign code, and the proposed sign location is in the northeast corner of the subject property. The site is zoned PID, which is Planned Industrial District, and in the Planned Industrial District, the property is allowed one wall sign per building per frontage and one freestanding sign per frontage. Between those two signs per frontage, there are allowed 86 square feet total, with no sign being larger than 50 square feet. The maximum height of a freestanding sign in the PID district is eight feet tall, which is what the applicant is requesting a variance for tonight. The variance request is for a 10-foot variance from the eight-foot height requirement to allow an 18-foot-tall monument sign. The applicant is requesting a 10-foot variance due to the change in grade of the subject property adjacent to Highway 169. An eight-foot sign would not be visible from Highway 169 due to the grade change, as you can see in the exhibit here. The proposed sign is an electric video sign, and that sign will need to meet the illuminated sign requirements of the city code, and the sign will not be able to change color or intensity of light more than once an hour unless it's showing the time, date, or weather. As you know, based on Minnesota statutes and city of Edina ordinances, certain conditions must be met for a variance to be granted. The first is to relieve practical difficulties that prevent reasonable use. The proposed monument sign will be adjacent to Highway 169, and the additional height in this instance will allow for visibility and for wayfinding. Staff believes that proposed use is reasonable. The second is that the circumstances are unique to the property and are not common in similarly-zoned properties and are not self-created. Staff believes that there are circumstances that aren't common in other similarly-zoned properties, the requested heights due to grade change from Highway 169 to the subject property, and an eight-foot sign would not be visible from the 169 frontage. The third is that variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. It's staff's position that the proposed variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The location of the proposed sign will have limited impact on surrounding properties. Tonight, the staff recommendation is to approve the requested variance to allow the height of the proposed monument sign adjacent to Highway 169 be up to 18 feet tall, based on the findings and conditions outlined in the staff report. And I will note that one of those conditions of approval that is proposed is that the video sign meet those illuminated sign portion of the city's sign code, and that means it would not change more than once an hour. And with that, I can take any questions, and the applicant is here tonight, too.
Thank you so much. Would anyone like to start us off with questions? Commissioner Bennett.
So you mentioned the illuminated city sign code, or whatever it's called. And you said, when it changes, it can't change more than once an hour. You mentioned something about the intensity of the light. Is it the background and all that stuff changing as well, or what type of changes are you talking about?
It can't change more than once an hour, so it has to stay a static message for an hour unless it's showing the date, the time, or the weather. So it couldn't have, like, flashing in the background or anything like that. The message would have to be static.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, did the applicant have any presentation or comments to make? All right, so if there's no further questions, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. So first, I will hear first from residents who are in person, and then after that, we'll hear from those who would like to call in. But those who are calling in to participate, call in now at 786-496-5601 and enter conference And then again, press *1 when you're ready to speak. Everyone will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Please give your full name and address, and staff member Liz Olson will let anyone who calls in know if they've gone over those three minutes. But first, is there anyone in person here to provide public testimony? Seeing none, I will look to our call-in.
Chair Agnew, I don't have any callers yet, but it hasn't quite been admitted yet since we started. There is a slight delay in the broadcast, so I would like to wait a minute before we move on. My clock shows that it's 7:08, so I will -- it just turned to 7:09, I swear. I'll come back to you at 7:10, or when I have a caller, whichever is first.
Thank you. All right, any additional caller, or any caller?
No, and it is 7:10, so it would be okay to move forward, I think.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing has been closed, and so now I will open it up to discussion or thoughts on this variance request. Commissioner Miranda.
Yeah, just gonna say that this seems to me to be a pretty clear, black-and-white issue where it meets all our sign requirements, and the only problem is that they want greater height, and the height is because where the sign is located is lower than street level. So I think this seems like a perfectly reasonable request.
Commissioner Bennett.
I just had a question that came up. Staff mentioned that the proposed use for this matches, and I guess that's just what I wanted to confirm, having seen other video signs around that sometimes advertise other things. Is this just to advertise for the business that's there and wouldn't go into other commercial purposes?
Right.
Okay. All right, cool. I agree with Commissioner Miranda fully.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion, then?
I move to approve the variance. Are there any staff requirements or anything?
No, I think it just says, "Based on the findings listed in the staff report."
Okay, yeah.
Second. All right, any additional conversation? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, your sign variance has been approved. Thank you. Next on our agenda tonight is a parking variance for Wooden Hill Brewing, and Director Teague will present tonight, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This property is located in the Cahill Industrial Park area at the intersection of Bush Lake Road and 74th, so west of Highway 100, kind of at the heart of the Cahill District. The site exists as a multi-tenant office space. There's some production and warehouse within it. The Wooden Hill Brewery sits roughly in the middle of the building. What they're proposing to do is expand the tap room to the north and build a new kitchen to the north of their existing space and add a smaller event room to the south. So for the parking calculation, it's based on all the tenants within the building. So based on the square footage of all those uses, 225 parking spaces are required on the site. That's based on our new ordinance. The previous ordinance would have required 260 spaces, so reduced a little bit. The site plan that they've provided, and they've restriped the surface parking lot out there, there is 171 spaces available, so a variance is requested for the shortage of 54 stalls. A parking study was done by StanTech. Ed Terhar is on the line with us this evening to answer any questions that you may have, but the study concludes that, based on the peak usage, the peak time for all the uses on the site, there would be adequate parking. 138 stalls are needed at the peak time. So the conclusion is that there is enough surface parking. But again, the request is for a 54-stall variance. So primary issue, are the three variance criteria satisfied? Staff believes that they are. The practical difficulty in this case is that there's no room on the site, given the size of the building and the size of the lot. There's no room on the site to expand the parking. We believe that the request is reasonable in that, again, based on that parking study, there would be adequate parking on the site. Also, there's on-street parking available. The roads are very wide. It's an industrial park, so there's a lot of space, and customers do often park on the street because it's closer to that front entrance. The unique circumstance here is the peak usage of the different uses on the site. It really lends itself to a shared parking arrangement, with the tap room peak being in the evenings and on the weekends. And again, there's no expansion to the building itself. So with that, staff is recommending approval. A couple of conditions I want to note, that they provide surface bike parking, bike stalls, and provide information to patrons and employees about metro transit routes that are nearby, and that they install directional signage on the site in the front of the building to direct people to the back, so they're aware that that big parking lot exists in the back here. We didn't receive any feedback on Better Together. So with that, again, staff is recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions in your staff report.
Thank you so much, Director Teague. What questions? Commissioner O'Kear.
Thank you. The question I had is probably for StanTech, is now the appropriate time to ask that?
Sure.
Okay, so the peak demand of 138 compared to the capacity of 171 is, I believe it was a Thursday night with a special event with 100 people going to it. And the assumption in the study, if I understood it, was that there would be an average of two and a half people per car going to this special event. And that seemed a bit generous to me. I was just curious how, where that two and a half person per car assumption came from, whether that's from data, or it's an industry benchmark, or how that came to be.
Yeah, the two and a half per vehicle is an industry benchmark.
Okay, thank you. So when one drives by today, as Director Teague mentioned, we'll often see cars on the street. So if there is capacity under current conditions, but we see cars on the street now, should we assume that that's just because people prefer to park on the street and there's actually space in the lot at that time?
That was exactly my experience when I was there. I drove up to the site, I saw cars parked on the street, I thought the lot was full, so I parked on the street. Turns out, there were many spaces in the lot. It's behind the building. You have to venture back there to find them, and when you do, there are spaces. But, you know, it's that situation where you see a spot on the street, you grab it. And that's what I did.
Yeah, that does make sense, because the building is quite convenient from the street also. So if you see a spot there, rather than see if there's a spot in the back, you might as well just take the one that you see. That makes sense. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Commissioner Padilla.
Was the parking study done under the assumption that the building was fully leased, and is it in fact fully leased?
It was done with the assumption that it was fully leased. I'm not sure if it actually is today. That'd be a question for the applicant.
Is that correct, and will that remain the same?
Yes, there are two in front.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Strauss.
Director Teague, the view you had up showing the parking lot and all the front and back, and that reflects existing, the existing situation now? I mean, I've been going there for, since it's opened, and I didn't know there was parking in back. So I'm one of those, so that may be a point for later, but I certainly, I'm not sure that that information or that it's well made aware that there is an additional parking. I have not had a problem with the street or in the front, but I mean, it is full, you know, but when I see all that back there, there's plenty. And, yeah, and I was not even aware there was a back outdoor patio, so that may be a question for later, but maybe promoting or making that a little more apparent, but...
Yeah, so that's part of the reason we want to, we condition approval on adding those signs in the front to lead people to the back. And they did resurface the lot about a week and a half ago, and I believe there's an additional, a little over 30 stalls, based just on the restriping. So there's even more stalls back there than there had been previously.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Director Teague. My question is about lighting at the back of the lot. Do you know what kind of lighting is in the parking lot? I just wonder for safety, you know, it's a brew house that might go later in the evening in an industrial area. Is there any lighting or safety concerns with the back lot?
Yeah, I believe there is lighting back there. They would be regulated by our lighting ordinance. They can't meet a certain lumen at the lot lines. We haven't received any complaints that I'm aware of.
But maybe no one knew the parking was back there to...
Right.
I have a question, and I don't know, Director Teague, if I should just ask this to the applicant, but is there an entry and an exit from that back parking lot, too?
There is.
Okay.
Yeah, you can get into the brewery from the back here.
Okay, through that patio?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for city staff? Did y'all have any presentation or anything that you wanted to say as well? Awesome, well, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Sean Yu, and I'm the co-founder and president of Wooden Hill Brewing Company. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. So my brother and I, my brother's James over there with the winter hat and the big beard, he brews all the beer, also my co-founder. So we started Wooden Hill in 2018 to share the joy of craft, and since then, the tap room at Wooden Hill has established strong roots in the community, and we provide a welcoming public gathering space and a unique experience to enjoy the freshly crafted products at their source with friends, family, coworkers. And over the years, Wooden Hill has become a special place to a lot of people in the community. And as a result, our business has grown, it's survived a pandemic, and reached a point where our existing tap room and kitchen really need to be expanded to better serve the community. And the expansion will also enable us to further our positive impacts in the community. So you might wonder, how does Wooden Hill impact the community? Our taproom works very well as a flexible meeting and event space, so it's a great option for local residents and businesses to host, easily host, events and celebrations. Over 450 events have been hosted at the taproom. And now, our demand in those events has never been higher since there's been a recovery from COVID-19 effects. We currently have 34 employees, but since we've opened, we've employed a total of 85 people, which has totaled $5 million in local wages and benefits paid. Nearly $1 million of sales tax revenue's been generated, contributing local roads, parks, public services. We've donated tens of thousands of dollars across numerous local charitable causes and involved in many fundraising events, both in the taproom, the community. We actively participate in the city's environmental sustainability initiatives. And by establishing Edina as a craft beer destination, and with our award-winning beers and recognition as a top taproom, Wooden Hill draws a lot of visitors in the city and provides a source of pride for residents, knowing that the beers that are made in their city have been awarded, including Best in the State. And as of the Silver Medal we just received last weekend's Great American Beer Festival in Colorado, now some of our beers are among the best in the nation. And coming back to the requested parking variance, we've taken a lot of steps with the city and with our own property to ensure that there will be sufficient parking available to tap from visitors after our expansion. We've done this not only to ensure there won't be a negative impact to the community, but also because we are committing a significant amount of capital to actually undergo this expansion, and it just seems like it wouldn't be a very good business decision to expand a taproom if there wasn't enough parking for people to actually be able to visit it. So, yeah, we look forward to growing with our community and continuing to give back, so I'm happy to address any questions you have. I can comment on a couple of the things, I took a few notes with some of the questions that were a little bit not quite fully answered yet. So regarding lighting, there was all-new lighting installed two years ago in the back, so high-intensity LED lighting also along the front as well. So lighting dramatically improved about two years ago, once those systems were upgraded. We, there was a time that we did actually have a signage on the side of the building where there's kind of a fire lane to get into the back of more parking in back. I think it has since fallen down, but it appears that still wasn't seen at the time for some of the visitors. And like some have noted, sometimes, a lot of times, parking on the street is full or almost full, and it appears as if that there's no parking available by first glance, but there's almost always a lot of spots in the back and around the side of the building, especially later on as the reserved spots for the tenants expire their time for the day. It is a fully leased building. Over time, Wooden Hill has taken over a lot more of it, so we actually lease over 30% of the building now. Only about 10% of that, 10% of the whole building, would actually be the taproom and expanded taproom. We have a lot of storage, we're housing production space and office suites, too. And then, we do have an entry and exit in the rear, along with a smaller rear patio. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I'll open it up, Danny. Commissioner Padilla.
Thank you for your presentation. How long is your lease in the building?
We just entered another five-year renewal. I'm also now an owner, one of the owners of the building, too. So we have, we're in our second five-year term. We have another five-year term guaranteed, but myself and the other partners in the building are very, we have all our interests aligned at making Wooden Hill and the other tenants of the building successful, so we don't foresee an issue with having to leave the property, and we certainly don't want to because we've made a very significant investment in building the taproom and brewery there, and it just wouldn't be feasible for us.
And we haven't gotten any kind of feedback. What have you gotten from your other, your co-tenants in the building in terms of this change, this expansion?
I think generally, it's very positive because they see how busy we can get in the taproom sometimes, and a lot of them are very frequent customers, especially for lunch meetings. And the resurfacing of the parking lot, which we just completed a week and a half ago, did increase parking by nearly 30%. Parking is very light during the day when the other tenants are in business, and so there's an abundance of parking during business hours. It's only in the evenings that, as more people visit the taproom, that's when we experience more parking. But by then, most or all of the tenants have left for the day, and they typically But by then, most or all of the tenants have left for the day, and they typically utilize only about 20 to 30 spaces, so actually a lot lower than the code allows them for a 24/7 requirement.
I also have been there many, many times and was not aware that there was parking in the back.
Now you know the secret, it's out.
So signage to that end, I think, will be a very important part. And congratulations on your call.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. We'll open up the public hearing then. So just as a reminder, first, I'll accept public hearing from those who are here in person. From those of you who would like to provide testimony remotely, please call in now at 786-496-5601 and enter conference PIN 6743296. Everyone will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Please start with your full name and address, and staff member Liz Olson will let anyone who calls in know if they have gone over three minutes. But first, I will start in the room if anyone would like to provide testimony for this one. Seeing none, I will look to our call lines. All right, let me know when our minute is up.
I will, at 7:30 now, so I'll come back at 7:31, or when I have caller, whichever's first.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing has now been closed. So with that, I will open it up again to my fellow commissioners for thoughts, comments. Commissioner Bennett.
Thoughts, for sure. Everything about their story is just amazing to me, and it's just a reminder how good change can be in our city, how it's needed, like this was, and is still needed elsewhere, and how we're trying to adapt with it. So I mean, even with the new parking ordinance, stuff can't quite capture everything, but they adequately are addressing how to mitigate the parking situation. And I'd say my only concern was, you know, no samples tonight. Good luck. I support this fully.
Commissioner Olson. I agree with Commissioner Bennett. I think it's wonderful when a local business can be so successful. Congratulations on surviving through the COVID, that's a big deal, and the fact that you do give so much back to the community, I think it's great and kind of a no-brainer. I've never been there, so now, now I can go. Commissioner Strauss.
Just a comment, in fact, the chair, Commissioner Alkire may talk about with their participation in the Cahill Study Group, but my comment was, back when the Cahill small year group was kicking off, and we did a sort of a meet with all the interested parties, and part of the activities to get the discussion going was to, what was, what was existing in the area that appealed to people and the assets and all this kind of stuff? And for a business that was, is relatively new, how established and popular it was with its residents and its neighbors, you know, speaks well for how you've been doing business there. It's sort of like, it was, it was like the, what was the best thing about the Cahill business area? And right at the top, one or two was Wooden Hill. So that's just my, that made quite an impression on me. Thank you.
Commissioner Alkire.
Yeah, I'll just build on what Commissioner Strauss was saying, that one of the things we're hearing in the Cahill District project is that residents in the surrounding neighborhoods want to see that district provide more gathering places for people. And that in a lot of ways, it's kind of a, has a tendency to be, the district overall has a tendency to be a dead spot. And your business certainly is not, and it shows, as Commissioner Bennett was saying, that you can create new things with change and create community gathering places where you might not have expected one before. So thank you and congratulations on the development of your business. Very much in support. I did also want to mention that City Recomment is requiring service bike parking as part of the process, and I think that makes a great deal of sense. We were talking at the working group, the Cahill District Working Group last night about Three Rivers Plans for a Bike Path Through Cahill. And if I had the map right, it's going to go right by you on Bush Lake Road. So having more bike parking would make that a more welcoming spot for the people who are using that trail in the years to come. So thanks for developing your business, and I look forward to visiting the special event room. I don't know if it'll be done in time for us to have a working group event there, but we'd certainly like to do that. Thanks for coming tonight.
Commissioner Padilla.
I also am fully in support of this project. I know that there are people that patronize your brewery in addition to the good food and good beer, just because they can park their electric vehicles right in front, too. So that is much appreciated by the city and its citizens. I think having a brewery in Edina, in that part of Edina, is terrific in terms of the draw that it is. I think the way that you guys performed in Colorado is a source of pride for you certainly and for everyone in Edina as well, so I'm fully, fully in support of this.
So I'll add some thoughts, too. I, a lot of it I would echo, right, especially being co-chair with Commissioner Alkire on the Cahill Working Plan, Working Group. I think it's been really, really eye-opening to that area as a whole. And so as I think about, you know, touching this site in particular, I realize that there's not really any, any change to the entirety of the building or really anything happening on that site. But one thing that we hear consistently is how, across that entire district, it doesn't feel safe for people to walk on the streets. If they're biking, they sometimes like feel unsafe, because there's always cars, especially by the brewery. And so I say that because I would love to see a sidewalk along the property. And I also understand that it would feel potentially weird to have just a sidewalk when there's no other sidewalks, you know, in the general vicinity. But I think, given, you know, how many people you do bring to the site, how many people are parking, you know, right there on the street, I would love to see a sidewalk there. And I just think that, you know, as we're having this conversation, it's a good opportunity to remind you that there are a lot of community members that, I think that would increase their feeling of pedestrian safety as well. Not necessarily suggesting that we make that a contingency of this, but I'm sure that we'll continue to engage in this way. But otherwise, yeah, super supportive, would love to see more signs. I, too, didn't know that there was parking in the back. And so I think, like, the thing that has scared me, like even of parking, is like, oh, is, now that like the limit of the parking is over, because I think most of the signs say like, oh, these hours, only park here. And I'm like, oh, does that mean I can if it's after hours? And so even if it's just like words on your website, too, or different signage on the doors, which I get people would have already parked on the street, but they'll be back, and so then the next time, they can park in the back. And then even thinking, I didn't realize there was a back door that would get through. And so as you're going through and doing this remodel, because it does sound like more of the impact will be internally, maybe making the thoroughfare more prominent and understood that like, there's two main entrances, as opposed to the main entrance and a back entrance, that might be another way to like really emphasize that there's a ton of parking and people should use it. All right, that was it. Otherwise, I'm very supportive of this. Any others? All right. With that, then, I will entertain a motion. And there's some good notes if folks are looking for the words to say.
Motion to approve a parking variance for 7429 Bush Lake Road, based on findings as listed on page five of the staff report. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. It has been approved. Thank you so much for coming in. Good luck. All right, so that concludes our public hearings. Next, we are on to a sketch plan review for 4212 and 4216 Valley View Road, and Director Teague will present tonight.
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. So this property is located, as mentioned, on Valley View Road, just north of Crosstown Highway 62. It's just south of the Valley View-Wooddale neighborhood node to the north. There's two properties that we're looking at this evening. Both of them contain duplexes on the site. Picture that's, well, blocked by the trees, but they're duplexes behind the trees there. The site is guided low-density attached residential, which allows up to eight units per acre. You can see it's all of the area in yellow here, primarily duplexes. Zoned R2 double-dwelling unit, again, the hashed-out X properties, those are all duplexes. Note that there are some PRD2, PRD3, a little bit higher density to the north, and then right along the Crosstown. What the applicant is proposing to do here is remove both of those duplexes and construct a series of five row homes, somewhat similar to the Grandview development over on Hankerson. Quick elevation of what they might look like. So what this would require is a comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide the site from low-density attached to medium density, which allows up to 12 units an acre. Also, a rezoning from that R2 zoning designation to PRD3, and they would need side yard setback variances as well. So when we look at the PRD3 standards, note they're suggesting a 20, or the city standard is 20 feet, and they're suggesting a 10-foot setback. And then the density, so it comes out to 8.03. Can we round down? We're almost at eight. It's based on the square footage that the county records show. The applicant is going to survey the site, maybe it's going to come in at eight units an acre, we'll see, but the way we think now, it would require that comprehensive plan amendment. So some of the issues for consideration, first in regard to affordable housing. So the average market value of each of those units is $280,000. So the units would be considered naturally occurring affordable housing. So the proposal is to remove those NOAA homes and replace them with market rate housing. The density, or the properties to the north and south are all zoned R2, so it would be, you know, a little different from the duplexes, both to the north and to the south. So again, we would be placing a different zoning district in the middle of that R2-designated area. When we did the comprehensive plan, we really didn't think about density along Valley Views. It went down to the Crosstown. One thing we may want to consider, as we have on our work plan for next year, is maybe this is an area that we look at for greater density along there. So this could be one of those areas that we study. Again, low-density attached residential, do we want to take that up a little bit? Something to consider for the future. To do it right in the middle of the block, you know, could be considered spot zoning or spot comprehensive planning. So some difficulties there. So those are the issues for discussion this evening. The applicant is here as well to describe the project in a little more detail. I can stand for any questions, otherwise I would turn it over to the proponent.
Wonderful, thank you, Director Teague. I think we'll start with Commissioner Olson. Can you tell me about the, what's currently on site, and is the housing dilapidated, or is there something wrong with the structure? Or do you have any information about the existing?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any difficulties. It's not a problem site where we've had complaints on. The picture is kind of, it's kind of hidden there behind those trees. Maybe the applicant has a little more information on the interior condition.
Commissioner Alkire.
Just a quick one. Commissioner Teague, am I right that the owner could tear down those duplexes and build two new duplexes without any variance at all?
They could.
With setback requirements and whatnot?
Correct.
Thanks.
And we're seeing that happen a little bit across town, duplexes being removed and more higher-end duplexes built.
Commissioner Miranda.
Yeah, the, does the current, do the current duplexes meet the side yard setbacks? Because it looks like this is smaller.
Yeah, I would have to check. So I'd have to check and see what the R2 side yard setbacks, I don't know off the top of my head. I believe it's 10 feet.
Oh, so, oh, so they're different for R3, so that's why it's, oh, I see. I see, I understand, okay. But currently, as this shows, the existing buildings are much closer to the...
They are.
To the side yards.
That's a good point. These would be set further back than what's out there. Yep.
Okay, all right. And so the 8.03, so, I mean, would it be possible for them to buy .03 acres or something and add that on or something? I mean, how much, how much square footage are we talking about?
Yeah, I didn't run that number, but it's, it's got to be close. That's why we were thinking, sometimes when you run the actual survey, those numbers can change, so we'll see. But that's an option, they could maybe purchase a little sliver, do a land trade.
So is, I mean, would that be considered, I mean, you know, the whole idea behind comprehensive plans is that you don't, as you said, you don't want a spot zone, you don't want a, or a spot comprehensive plan or whatever. But I mean, are there legitimate reasons like this, where it's like, you need to do that to fit something that's basically, you know, within 1/100th of a, or 3/100th of a...
Yeah, you can kind of see on the zoning map here, there's a little of that going on, where you've got a little bit, well, PRD2, PRD3 with an R2, so there's kind of a mixture pattern happening along the street.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff tonight? All right, thank you so much, Director Teague. Well, I'll invite the applicant up to make their presentation, please. Applicants.
I've got your... Yes, yep.
I'm Steve Venky with Donnie Holmes and Mr. Paul Donnie.
Paul Donnie, 6605 Mohawk Trail. So I've got two hats tonight. I'm going to wear, one as a builder and one as a resident for many decades in the city. So the existing one that I own, you were asking about the quality or how that building is, and one of the twins is, is, it's not in the best shape. I mean, I just re-roofed it and stuff, so it, it needs some work, and I thought maybe this would be a viable project. I do a lot of singles at Dunlumberg. I think 100 single families in the city now, and then this latest townhouse, so I think there's a need for this type of housing, and I think we've gone over that when we had the resistance at Grandview. when we had the resistance at Grandview from the neighbors. They thought it would be downgrading their neighborhood. But did any of you get to come through the parade of homes and see the quality here? Some of you got to be, okay. Yeah, I think we're proud of it. I think it turned out, and the neighbors certainly, of course, over the decades, I run into that a lot where there's a lot of opposition until I build a product like this. And then they're 90%, 95% of the time, they're very happy with the final outcome. So maybe we could do something like this in the Valley View area and offer some type of housing for maybe the missing middle, which we talked about here in this project, for people my age who are selling their bigger homes and they want to live in Edina and they don't want to rent and pay, you know, huge amounts of rent, which the city is getting right now. And in this situation, they have a, look at the yard here that they have. And we were talking about the brewery. I go by the brewery a lot, can't stop because I'm usually on the way to the hockey arena to drop off one of my grandkids. So, but, you know, for grandkids, it made me think of this, you know, this is several of the residents that have bought here have grandkids that come over and they use the yards and they're pleasantly surprised at the usability of it. So that's just some of my comments, I guess. Wanted to just be here tonight and hear some of your comments.
Thank you.
Generally, the building, both of the buildings that are there are Rambler full basement units. So the bulk of the usable space is on the main floor. And what we have from some of our other projects is a building that is more of a split level. And it has, in this case, we'd be proposing a lookout basement. If we can, do I do that or you? You can't switch it from there? Okay. Yeah. Just the plan. Should have got that from you originally. Yeah, you see that? Unless it's my own PowerPoint, I don't know how to use it. Thank you. Next one down. Thank you. So basically, currently, both buildings have detached garages. This provides an attached garage, this plan idea. Family room, three bedrooms, but much more usable space. These are somewhere in the 17, 18, 100 square feet of usable space, and the existing ones are closer to 1,000 on the main floor and then whatever they can do with the basement because it's basically fully below grade. Where the Grandview had a front yard that we can play in, these units would have a backyard because of the depth of the lot. What we were looking at doing was consolidating all of the entrances to a single one where the existing shared driveway is. Basically, these two units already share a driveway and basically keeping all of the parking and drive to the front. What I find interesting is that no matter how big the units are, it would still only allow, you know, we're still at eight units an acre, just a fraction over. They could be 100 square feet smaller, 200, 300 square feet smaller units, and we're still stuck at the eight units an acre density. And I think the big thing that this project would do is bring a lot more usability to the living spaces. And what it also does is because the extra unit basically allows us to address issues that current homes have to meet when they are, when we do the redevelopment work. Grandview had extensive costs in new infrastructure, new sewer and water, new utilities for all the units that are in there. We did an extensive amount of work trying to manage the surface water. And all of those costs basically get absorbed into any new building. The problem with naturally occurring affordable housing is that it's relative. You know, what might be affordable here is not necessarily affordable in another city. What might be affordable in another city might not be available here. We don't expect this project to meet the same price point that Grandview does, not by any means. It's in a completely different part of the city. It does face a very busy freeway. 62 and Valley View, that intersection is basically right there. I think because of that, the additional density is something that can work here. And I think, as Kerry pointed out, perhaps that whole area can be looked at. You know, if we are looking at a PRD designation, there are other ones very nearby. So the fact that we're sort of upzoning one area here, it is happening in that area already. I think the biggest issue is exactly how much square footage of land do we have? And are we really over eight? Do we really need that medium density rezoning and regiding? And that's to be determined. Basically, we wanted to get some feedback from you guys first about the idea, and then what we can do is decide how we're going to proceed. Would we like to have more land? Would we like to have another building here to make it a bigger project? Sure. That might happen. I mean, it's happening elsewhere. I didn't, you know, Paul had that one building, and we didn't know the other one was going to happen. So it does happen. And for right now, I guess, like I say, we're looking for some feedback for this idea in this area.
Thank you so much. Who would like to get started with questions? Commissioner Bennett.
Sure. Yeah, so feedback, I think you touched on pretty much everything I was going to mention. Yeah, I mean, you guys did a comparative change in Grandview, and I was definitely on the side of making that work. And I knew a lot of the neighbors there, and most of them were opposed to it, but it made sense there a lot. And there was already density there, just like there is here to some level. And you guys, at this point, had a similar proposal with front-loaded garages and then took that feedback and put them to the back to the alley, which was the right move. And the curb appeal in that experience of those and the quality of the units is great. And it just works there and looks nice. This is a unique corridor in our city, and, you know, we are talking about looking at different corridors of change, not necessarily nodes. And this corridor has density on it. It's just different. But, I mean, you saw it on the map. It's R2 on both sides. So if there was anywhere that we'd logically densify, this seems like a prime candidate. You're right by the freeway, and then you have a node very close by. And if there is going to be logical changes, seems like it. And this is not a ton of change. I mean, it's only one more unit. So I feel like there's a tension of like, there is something affordable there right now. But like Commissioner Alkire mentioned, no one's stopping you and yourself from building two more duplexes that are nicer. Here, we could get another unit. I think just my gut with this is, I'm trying to think in my mind how to do it a different way, but I don't like the front-loaded garage. I just feel like the garages are right in your face. And the nice thing with Grandview and just row houses like that in general is just that curb appeal of like an active front that's more engaging for someone to walk by or bike by. And that's the main thing of my feedback. I probably support where this is going, even if it's just one more unit. It's in a denser corridor that was designed that way because it is situated where it is. I'd like to hear other people's feedback. I just wish you could have an alley like you had at, you know, in the Grandview area where you could flip this around. I'm just trying to, I'm still trying to process this. I've been processing it since the weekend when I looked at this, and I don't know.
Make sure if I made it. Alley was a gift.
Oh, yeah.
It was a gift. And being able to use it, getting the feedback from you and then being able to use it was
Can you use the mic, she said?
Oh, sorry.
Only we can hear you.
Yeah, that, he was talking without it, and I thought I could hear him, but anyway.
He should have held it for you.
Yeah, there you go. No, I was just saying that, you know, the alley there was a gift and being, getting the direction to use it, it really pushed us design-wise. I think here, the biggest negative to trying to force parking in the back is that you're going to give up the play space and the play space away from Valley View, which is a very busy road. I do appreciate that. I mean, I think that the shared drive is a better solution than five individual driveways. I do think there's a buffer between the sidewalk and the parking that could be planted. The, you know, we put a little bit of work into the building and the site plan right now, but it's really more the concept. Does five units replace four in this location?
Thanks, yeah. And I definitely am in support of that. I guess, yeah, my feedback is just however you can at least even activate the facade of the front, you know, and just how I saw the plan, that's just my, that's my gut feedback right now. But yeah, interested to hear what other commissioners say.
Commissioner Alkire.
Thanks for the presentation. Do you have in mind benchmark price, plus or minus 10%? I mean, what market are you shooting at with this?
Pricing. You know, with the price of the way things have been, I've never seen this in 40 years, you know. The way lumber moves, Mr. Chair, you know, the, yeah, we'd like to, we'd like to say in that maybe the high fives, sixes depending on if the lower levels are finished. So that's what we try and shoot for.
And how does that compare to Grandview?
Grandviews have escalated up. They were in the nines.
And then nines?
Yes.
Really?
Yes. And the last two I sold were, of course, that south unit has a yard as big as a single family. That sold for a million, well over a million dollars.
Really?
Yes, really. Thirty, they're 3,100 square feet.
I liked also, too, that our entry-level townhomes in Cottage Grove on what was a farm field. Okay. You can tell somewhere over there that I, okay, thank you. Is this, okay. Our entry-level townhomes in Cottage Grove on what was a farm field are in the high 300s today. Prices are still way up from the COVID issues. Materials, spot shortages still happen. Lumber, well, right now, fuel is sort of a big deal. It all, we're back to the relative thing again. Entry level today is not $190,000.
No, I understand. I guess the reason for my question was I was trying to get at more, okay, how do these five potential units fit into our goal of housing diversity in the city? And it seems to contribute in a positive way to that, even if it's, I mean, painful to see naturally occurring affordable housing go away. It's more painful when it's replaced by a million-dollar house than it is by something significantly less than that. So, I mean, there's ways we can improve the diversity of the housing in the city, even if we don't get all our toys all at once. Would you mind, there was some pictures in our briefing that showed some renderings of the facade of the buildings?
I'd probably rather go, the facades were pretty rough. They come across pretty rough in my, are the photos in here, too? In the
The Ramblers that are there are, I was looking for, kind of tired.
Well, yeah, that's that one I was looking at.
The old buildings.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was going to, some photos of actual buildings from another project of ours. It's certainly a place of start at this point of the process.
Yeah. So is the reason for the, that wasn't, that's Grandview. Well, the reason for it, because you mentioned a few moments ago, a project in Cottage Grove. And to me, the buildings that I saw in the preparation materials that we had looked more like what I would see in Cottage Grove or on a highway in outer ring suburb. Yes, this.
No, Paul, he just got it on them.
Yeah, that is a project that we, David, we built 100 of those on the north side, 100 townhomes on the north side of Buck Hill. And some of them overlooked. And that was the product. So the elevation would change a lot for this project. I would give it to one of my new designers, and he would change this. So this is what was from that Buck Hill project.
And that started in 2006.
Yeah.
So I mean, we're a little dated with our materials here. But again, I'm really looking back to the five units on four, on a lot that currently has four.
Yeah, so is this a representative sample of materials and style that you would expect to have on Valley View?
No. No, the style would definitely change. It's simply an existing plan, existing building with the same plan that we would be using.
Okay.
But I think I must say, Commissioner, that if we push the limit on the, like LP All Around or Hardy, that's going to drive the price up. I mean, you look at what we built on Grandview with real stone and all LP and cement driveways, not asphalt driveways, and all the coffered ceilings and all the shiplap and the finished bar downstairs and the double fireplaces. We don't see that happening here. We want to make this more affordable. And so we're not going to elaborate that much, but we are going to change the exterior elevation to make it more update.
Okay. I mean, I imagine we'd have a chance to see another version of this at some point.
When we bring in, assuming we get some positive responses here, we're going to, we'd be bringing in a proposal, absolutely.
Okay. And the reason, the reason it's important to me is that driving north, I guess, north and then northwest of Valley View towards the neighborhood node we have up there, I mean, we're, as a city, we're trying to accomplish something there to give a vibe, a feel. And for me, as a commissioner, this kind of construction doesn't do it for me. And it's, and if you look at what we're trying to accomplish just up the hill to the west there, you'll know what I mean. And so I understand the cost trade-off, but I would like to see us be more creative and find a way to hit a cost of something like 600 or whatever you're thinking, less than a million and not have it look like something, not have it look quite like that. The last thing was, can you say more about the shared drive? It's not quite clear to me how that works.
Well, currently, I think we're Yep. I got it. I figured it out. So currently, the two duplexes, ones here and ones here, have a shared drive, and there are two detached garages in the back. Am I able to zoom in on this? What have you? Okay. And there. So the site plan shows a little better. I'm using the existing driveway entrance. And basically, there's a shared drive across the front into the garages with this current layout.
And we can landscape all of that.
Okay.
Yeah, the entire Boulevard is then available for landscaping.
We should really be able to soften that front look by doing some nice landscaping between the Valley View Road and the homes.
All right, I understand now. Thank you.
Sure. You know, I've done a lot of, not a lot, but I've done some twin homes in the city too. And some of them, we've had the luxury of turning the garage. I shouldn't bring that up, but, you know, this site, you know, it's tough where you have one garage comes in from the front and the other unit comes in from the side. And that's really a nice look, but you just don't have the space here to do that. And that's really a nice look, but you just don't have the space here to do that. But it's worked, it's worked for us on a lot of projects where we have more room.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Olson. The people who are currently living here, what approximately are they paying in rent each month?
My renters are paying about $1,250 to $1,300 a month. Yeah, the basement isn't really usable because has no egress windows. See, those are all, all ramblers. And the, and the look of the, the front of it is real tired, just a prime rambler.
Just a couple of quick questions as far as parking, and thank you very much for your presentation. So I assume there's no street parking on Valley View, so where is visitor other parking?
Two spots in front of every garage plus two spots in the garage.
And then the?
There's, on the end of the private drive, there's a couple of spots that are more seasonal, I guess, when you think about it, because there still is the need to remove snow.
And then trash pickup would also be right on Valley View, and in order to get out of the garage, you'd have to back up into Valley View?
No, you could actually, there's room to back up on the private drive and then leave. Yeah, I'll go back to the.
Yeah, and I would be the, I would be the declarant or the president of the HOA like I've been in too many times, probably 40 to 50 times I've been the president over the years, and until we get 75 or 80%, 75% ownership, then we have a meeting and elect a new board, and then I leave. And some of those projects are from, probably, this is a very small one, this is probably one of the smallest ones, from probably 30 to 40 units up to 215 of townhomes and villa homes that I've done.
So basically, even on the end unit, there's room to back into the spot and then leave facing forward.
Thank you.
So I guess with, in this one, we'd probably, since I'd be the, running the HOA, we probably have to haul snow here, just like if we have to haul snow on Grand View with our, and load it out with our bobcat.
Commissioner Miranda.
Yeah, so I'm going to go back to Commissioner Bennett's comments in terms of, you know, the garage is facing the front. So in terms of the density and everything, I think it's fine, it's really not going over the, what the neighborhood is planned for right now, so I don't see that as being a problem at all. In fact, like I pointed out to Director Teague, the, these units can be further away from the housing next door, so I don't think that's a big issue. But I am, like Commissioner Bennett, very concerned about the, the front, which is, you know, driveways, garages, not much else.
Sure.
You know, for a lower priced product like this, lower priced, do you see any demand for one car garages instead of two car garages, or, I mean, you're going to have the E-line going less than half mile away from there. Is that something you guys would consider?
Because most of the cities we work in require two car garages.
Right.
So that is a, that is a very interesting point, Commissioner Miranda, and something definitely you can consider.
Because we don't anymore, right? We only require one. Yeah, it's, it's.
I'm sorry, was that an agreement with them or was that, yes, you do?
Single family homes can have a one stall garage.
Just wanted to be clear, okay, thank you.
Sure, yeah, so there, there's going to be an E-line stop half a mile from there. It's kind of awkward to get to because you have to go west to go east, but there is a, a wide sidewalk and a bike lane on 62nd Street, so it would definitely be doable. And we're not going to transform everybody to be transit takers overnight or anything, but if, if these, with, again, with more people working at home and whatnot, I would think that houses or, you know, housing units could, some of them could handle having a single car garage and other, you know, the other person taking transit when they need it. So that would, that would improve things. Another possibility would be moving the units closer to the street, which would probably need a variance, and having the parking in the back, but it would also allow for a larger backyard.
Yeah, we're actually quite a bit behind the existing fronts and the average front setback with this idea. And again, we were looking at it as trying to minimize hardcover, because at some point engineering will get involved and we have to mitigate that, which was pretty pricey at Grand View. But yeah, I do see what you're saying and I do understand what you're doing. I think, I think there's a way to look at that too, and that perhaps that rear drive area, shared drive area is play area for the kids and it's farther away from the road too. I think getting back there becomes an issue because of the setbacks and building with, I do like puzzles, so.
I do like the one car garage idea, though. I mean, normally we're so pushed to maintain that two car plus an oversized, some of the square footages that we have to meet, so that might be, that might be interesting to lay it out like that.
Yeah, so that's really my main concern is, is the, both from a looks perspective and a perspective of, and that, that area used to have transit going along it, which has since been removed, but the, like I said, the E-line is going to be 15 minute buses, you know, 24 hours a day, it's going to open in two or three years, so the transit, you know, nearby really will be quite nice, so.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bennett.
Just to add on, I mean, not even, I mean, single car, but it could be single entrance where you have the old tandem style too, where, I mean, if that's what you were saying.
I didn't understand what you were talking to, yeah. The storage can be valuable and giving it up sometimes is difficult, but yet minimizing that, the garage front is always a goal. It's always a goal no matter where we are.
And I guess just looking at the specific, in like your examples, like all the stoops are recessed in, so the garages are extra prominent, so like, if you freed up that much of an entrance, you could, you have a usable room.
Yep.
And justify the stoop being ahead of the garage, so, just however you can do it to make it active like that.
Yeah, I've actually pulled the stoop farther forward and given a better feel with the roof of the porch where the entrance still is set. The issue becomes where does utilities go? And I'm getting in the weeds here with stuff, there's just so many different pieces that we have to accommodate, but anyway.
I'll share some of my thoughts as well. In, in general, I like the additional density and I think that .03 just, like, it's a rounding error, like, what if we only did like one decimal point in and then it's eight? So that one I am a lot less concerned about, but if, if it does get to the point where we do have to update that zoning, I think it's something that we should, that entire corridor is probably one of the areas that we should add to our list for places to study. But in, in general, right, love increasing incrementally the density, right? So going from four to five, it's not completely overhauling, it's not like you're asking for, you know, a 20 person apartment building or 20 unit apartment building. So I like, I like that part of it. I also, I mean, on the other hand, I do like preserving naturally occurring affordable housing where possible, but I think that, you know, with you already taking ownership for this, you could easily, they could easily build something else, and so I don't think that that in and of itself is, is something that should prevent us from doing it. I also just validated, right, that the average assessed value of homes across Edina in 2022 was 797,000. So if this were to come in at the, you know, 500, 550 price point, that's still by Edina more affordable than the average. I just, I'm hoping that we can find an extra 100 feet or something. I didn't do the math, don't quote me on the 100 feet, but it just feels like then we could avoid having to do a comprehensive plan amendment. But ultimately, I think a lot of my concerns are, are just things that maybe you haven't thought about, right? Like, we haven't gotten that full, full visual of what this is going to look like, so I think that I would agree with Commissioner Alkire of really consider the depth, the dimensionality, kind of everything, and I like single car stall as well idea. I think that's all, that's my.
Well, if you recall, we did sort of change horses on Grand View and it turned out pretty good, so I, I think that we can take the, the suggestions and really work on it hard.
Commissioner Bennett.
Let's have a question, I mean, like, I look at this, I'm like, yay, we're gaining one unit. Is there, with some of these changes, I mean, I would be interested if you could get another one in there to make things more affordable, and I don't know what, what type of limitations with space there are with your price point, but getting it even closer to what the existing house was to the neighbors, I don't know what you're up against and I don't.
I think part of the problem, just to sort of give you a background, you get to a point of decreasing returns with infrastructure. That's a, that's a huge one right now. If it's staying in a townhome style, individual services are required. So we're basically going from the building to the street with individual waters, individual sewers, terminating anything that exists. I mean, we have to upgrade them anyway because of the new standards that the city uses in terms of water, water main sizes, plus these are townhouses, so we have to go to a bigger water supply line. I mean, so really, the infrastructure issue, you really start to get to a point where adding the extra units starts to hurt the whole concept of keeping them affordable.
No, I, I understand that, but I, I mean, if, if you're interested in, because I mean, right now, it's a stoop with two car garages that are defining that width, and if those went to a single garage, you could easily justify lengthening your building and not making it so wide each unit. So if you could get six in there, I mean, I, I don't under, like, I, I hear what you're saying, but I feel like it would benefit you more to have another unit on there if you could make it work.
Well, then we're definitely over the eight and we're definitely looking at upzoning the area and up, you know, changing the conflict in the area. I, I'm thinking right now, politically, the whole way through, that it'd probably be safer to stay just at eight, but I do hear what you're saying and I do understand the direction that you're suggesting.
But isn't it eight per acre, so, well, I guess, yeah, you add one more unit with the same amount of space. You happen to own neighboring properties?
He keeps trying.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I mean, that's just my gut, like, just with this, with how it looks, if it could, I mean, I'd be willing and, and I'm separate and it's my own opinion, but I would upzone to make this look better, to have a better curb appeal with an extra unit in there, if it had the same vibe as, say, the Grand View condos.
I understand.
Yep.
Thank you.
You could also, and I'm not an architect, so, but this is where I was thinking, you know, right now, it's, they're split levels, which, from an accessibility standpoint, that makes it more difficult. And so if you did like two single level and stacked the units, that might be a way to have kind of one level living, which would be more accessible for folks.
The stacked flat is a different kind of building totally, which might be a direction, definitely, it's something for us to think about, but it is a different, it becomes a condo, not a townhome. Yeah, but it, it might solve some of the other issues.
Which we've done a lot of.
Services, services can be done different, some of the infrastructure might be simpler. It has other, I mean, there's a lot of pluses and minuses, and townhomes have usually been a solution that we've aimed at better, from the standpoint of everybody gets their own lot, everybody has their own piece of land, there's common use, common maintenance and things like that, but a lot of people like to have their piece of earth.
Commissioner Miranda.
Yeah, I guess one last thing on naturally, naturally affordable, no, naturally occurring affordable housing, is my understanding, that's mostly to do with apartments and stuff. I mean, do people really talk about that in terms of single family homes? Because it seems that, you know, the worst thing to do with affordable, with affordable housing is to build the same density much more expensively, right? So that, that would absolutely kill affordability. But if you increase density, albeit not very much, but if you increase density, then you're actually making it more affordable than if you built the same number of units with new infrastructure, right? So, I mean, it's not going to suddenly be $190,000 for a unit or anything, but, so I think, I'm not so worried about losing, you know, naturally affordable housing, or naturally occurring affordable housing, when we're increasing density. To me, as long as we increase density, I think it's a good thing, so.
And just to add on to that, I mean, that was part of the challenge with the Grand View proposal, I think it originally started with 12 units and then went to 10 and then, yeah, 13 to 12, 10. 13 to 12, then eight, right? And each time that happens, people got happier, but everything got more expensive. And so, again, like, if you could squeeze six into here, I, I don't know, I'm, maybe I'd like to have a straw poll too, but if we could fit one more in here to just make that relatively more affordable, it's like, those are some of the goals we're trying to balance too as a city. And so here we have this opportunity to get one more unit of density. It's like, I don't see the neighborhood, you know, upset and in an uproar over this or even it going to six, if, if you could get creative. But again, I might be alone there, but to Commissioner Miranda's point, that kind of thing can help make this more affordable too.
Good. I think, again, the key we approached it with was a townhome, so I think we're going to start, you know, back up to that level and take a look at it.
Commissioner Padilla.
I think the relative affordability needs to be based on a median value, not an average value, so I think that's an important distinction. I would also like to see the development of a cohesive plan for this area. I think what we're working on now is kind of a hodgepodge, and we've got this very viable node that's very close by that we're working on, so to be putting in a variety of different things and that don't complement the node is shortsighted. So I'd like to see us take a longer view and look, excuse me, developing something that put, you know, makes the whole neighborhood look better, elevates the entire neighborhood, including the node and all the homes around it.
Commissioner Alkire.
Yeah, Commissioner Bennett said he was looking for a straw poll, so I just thought I'd jump on his last comment and endorse it. I too would be really interested to see versions that had six units instead of five, if that helped afford, improved density, help affordability, and also perhaps allow a little more investment on the way the building looks on the outside. It changes your model obviously quite a bit, just, so those would be positive changes in my view, yeah.
Four singles and two double garages, something like that, where it gives it a little, I mean, I, I don't think you're going to be disappointed in the exterior elevation once we're done, because we'll, you know, take from all we've built in Edina, and you'll be very pleased with the exterior. Now, if we can just figure out the, the unit count and, and make that work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Miranda.
Sorry, one last thing I just, I just thought of, so, you know, somebody mentioned, maybe it was Commissioner Bennett, maybe, I forget who, but missing middle housing or whatever. So one thing that, you know, when you study this sort of thing, you see that historically there's been all sorts of housing, and now we have townhomes or single family homes, you know, or apartments. There's like nothing in between, like courtyard homes or all these other ways of doing things. Is there any other way of using this land in a way that would be, that would allow you to have, you know, either fewer garages or less driveway or something that wouldn't necessarily be townhomes, but that would still be individually owned lots, but it would be maybe in a different shape or, you know, I mean, I know, and you're not going to come up with an idea right now, but I'm just saying, you know, we're looking at missing middle housing. middle housing, wow us.
Actually, I have a courtyard project that he and I actually met on thirty years ago. I might, I might resurrect it, we'll see.
There you go. All right, thanks.
Any final comments from anyone? All right, well, hopefully we gave you enough to think about, thank you so much for coming in tonight.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, last, not really last, but kind of last item on our agenda tonight is to go through our current 2022 work plan, and I just ultimately want to get some status updates on, on how things are going. Thankfully, Commissioner Smith emailed out or submitted some of his comments on how things are going with the ADU, and I know that we'll go into a deeper dive on that on November sixteenth or something, sounds about approximately right, but we could just go by one by one, for those of you that are leading up various commission work plan line items and get a little bit of an update, I think that'd be great. Does anyone want to start?
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. So I met with staff last Wednesday with Director Teague and Planner Lewis, and we came up with a plan for what we would like to move forward with, with the public hearing process, and so Planner Lewis actually just emailed me something right before this meeting, that we will be ready to present something on November sixteenth. I need to talk with you, because you wanted to participate on that as well, so we'll be touching base before the sixteenth, but we'll be ready for the work session with something, something there.
Awesome. Any questions for Commissioner Olson? All right, who's next? Nope, we're randomly jumping in.
I'll randomly jump in, then. Happy to announce that the Cahill Area District Plan is completed and will be presenting to the council next week. Did you know that? Just kidding.
That doesn't, that doesn't sound right.
I was just testing, to see if anybody was paying attention.
Wait, completed?
Yeah, so we had our ninth meeting, I think it was, yesterday, and probably close to the halfway mark, because the project is going to go, well, maybe about a halfway mark, because I think the project is now going to go through March. We were really fortunate through the work of the city staff to get some money from Hennepin County, which will allow us to do a more thorough job of analyzing and, and creating a vision for connectivity, both within and to the district, which is turning them out to be, turning out to be a really important part of the project, so that's really fantastic, and thanks to the, to the team for being able to do that. Making good progress, I think, if, as I described at our meeting last night, it feels like we're, we're easing our way from the fact-finding and, you know, just contextual part of the process, and sort of making a turn into actually creating the vision for the future, so that felt good to be, you know, moving in that direction, and as I think the last meeting we have on the current timeline is in March, so good progress, still a considerable distance to go. Yes, Jerry, Commissioner Shouse.
There were some rather significant infrastructure issues with the park, has that
Has, has the city kind of come in, I mean, with stormwater?
Yep.
And, and I think water, I mean, have those sort of issues been kind of addressed for longer term?
Well, you know, I, our assumption for this plan is that, and we, we understand that there are some rather dramatic solutions to the stormwater problems available upstream in Bretison Park, but these are, that would be a major capital project that is just frankly not likely to happen, so our assumption as we prepare the plan is that the water situation is what the water situation is, and we're going to try to find a way to manage that within the project and within the district.
Well, I know sanitary capacity was, was, we've looked at a number of projects that the biggest obstacle to go forward was, there was no capacity.
Right, and the investment is believed to be quite large, and our assumption as, for this project, is that will continue to be a constraint. If I'm answering your question.
No, I was just, okay.
And I think to add to that, just kind of a known quantity when there is development happening, of needing to have a storage tank, needing to do something site-specific with incremental development. All right, and then I think that with Commissioner Smith's update on ADUs, we've gotten updates on all of the ongoing stuff, but is anything missing? Am I overlooking any work stream? All right, awesome, well, thank you for going through that. Chair and member comments.
Commissioner Padilla.
I have a question and a comment. My comment is, I don't know if everybody is aware, but, you know, we had gotten that presentation on seventy-two-hundred and seventy-two-fifty France Avenue, and even though I think they're coming back to us, or it's up to City Council, I'm happy to report that seventy-two-fifty building is a pile of rubble, so as far as I'm concerned, that's a lot of progress. It's flattened, and there's no building near anymore as of today, so I think that's great. And my question is, as far as the, what we're voting on in November, as far as the loss issue, are they, they're being presented on the ballot as two separate issues, is that correct? So one can be, so Braemar could be approved and Fred Richards could be not approved? Or either one or both?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay.
Any other comments? All right, then we'll go to Carrie.
Quick update from the City Council, the seventy-two-hundred and seventy-two-fifty project was headed for a split vote at the last meeting, so it was tabled, because they were short one member, so it will be on the agenda next week, and the council did take final action on the public work site, so that was approved for the housing, restaurant, and park. That's it.
Dr. Teague, is it okay if I ask a question? What were they split on, on that project? I'm just curious, I didn't watch that one.
Two members were not in support of the project, concerns over height, meeting the design guidelines, how the buildings did or didn't engage the north-south street, you know, where it dips down, there are concerns there, so.
Director Teague, are you, could I ask about that project? Because I was going to change the subject.
Yeah, so was I, so, I'll follow you.
Okay, anything to, on the trade, tree ordinance, did that, is that still?
That has been passed.
Has it?
Yes.
Fantastic, thank you.
It takes effect the first of the year, next year, but it has been approved.
As written?
Yes.
Fantastic, thank you.
Carrie, the, the, our restaurant on Vernon, is there been, I'm trying to think, we, we looked at it as a proposal, so did the, has the council?
Not yet, it was scheduled for public hearing at their meeting next week, the applicant has requested that it be continued to their November meeting, with the intention of having another neighborhood meeting to try to address some of the concerns, so November fifteenth, November fifteenth, they'll take that up.
All right, anything else? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, meeting's adjourned, thanks, everyone.